Call to order the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, January 26, 2016, and we'll start with roll call.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Amy Seboth-Wilson?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Mike Den?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Barbara Stackhausen?
Here.
Tom Knoll?
Here. Our first item this evening is a special presentation about Southwest Health Emergency Medical Services, an update.
Good evening. As all of you know, but not everybody else may know, my name is Brian Allen. I'm the director of EMS for Southwest Health. Wanted to come tonight just to go over the building plans because these are, what you have in front of you is almost the final plan. We made some modifications at our last meeting that we had with the architects, but nothing earth shattering or major, most people aren't even going to notice. So, the first page is just the basic information as to the location map, any information as to who the architect is, the general contractor. Next page, A1.1, is the site, how the building is going to lay out on the site. For those of you that are familiar with where the emergency department is and the ambulance entrance, there's a staff parking lot right off of the ambulance entrance or the ambulance bay at the hospital. And there's a service road that goes all the way around the facility. And our building is going to be right there on the corner as you start to make that curve The two, between the apron for the ambulance bay and the actual parking lot, you'll see that there's two islands there. The one closest to the building is completely removed to make it easier for our facility operations team for snow removal. And the other one closer to the road is greatly reduced, again, for the facility operations, make it easier for them to plow. Page A2, .2 is the actual layout of the building. As you can see from the plan, we have base space for six vehicles, whether it be ambulances or the mass casualty trailer that we house, quick response vehicle, so, different things. The bays are too deep, three across. We had looked at doing a drive-through bay, but because of cost, that was excluded, that was knocked off the plans. However, on the backside of the building where the bays would have been, or the garage doors, they are knockout panels, so in the future, if we want to, later on down the road, make it a drive-through bay, we can by just knocking out those panels and putting in the doors. And also, one thing I didn't mention, on the other, on the page prior, you'll see a dotted line on the top of the facility that is an expansion bay. If we needed, we have that space to add on. They've already measured and they know the setback and how far we need to be from the lot line for that to go. Then looking at the main part of the building, walking in the vestibule, you walk into, from the vestibule into a small lobby area. And if you go down the right hallway, there will be the office for the EMS coordinator and my office. There will be a report room. That hallway is a secured hallway because of the public space, the community room or training room. There will be a key access or a card access to go down that hallway if there's a public event going on. Going to the left, there's a mechanical room, and there's a storage room off of the community or training room. The storage room is for the tables, the chairs, our training equipment, that's all going to go in there. The space is 32 by 32, which would allow for 48 people sitting at tables. So it's a larger space, but doing education, if we have EMS courses there, we need the space to break out and not be on top of each other when we're practicing different skills. Off the community room is a kitchen with a storage area pantry. And back out into the hallway, there is a water fountain and a public men's and women's restroom. Then you're going to come to a set of double doors, and those are secured doors as well. Reason for those being secured doors is then you're entering into the staff area of the dorm rooms, the day rooms, the staff locker, and bathrooms. So, that's all the private space for the staff. And we chose to do that because if there's staff sleeping, we don't want people running down the hallway making noise for them when they're trying to sleep. So, like I said, there are four dorm rooms, so that if staff need to stay there or, as we expand, additional staff, so they can sleep during the day or at night. There is men's and women's locker rooms and staff bathrooms, same area. And going back to the ambulance bay, we have a storage room for tools, cleaning supplies, those different things that we use on the ambulances. We have a laundry and decon area with a decon, or with a decontamination shower for staff if we are contaminated with anything, and a supply room for our medical supplies and our drugs that we would have. That door is going to, or that room is a special secured room because of the drugs. So, on the far wall of the ambulance bay, there are some, you'll notice, look like cabinets, and that's exactly what they are, is cabinets for additional storage. Page A5.1 is the different elevations. The building will be marked, above the ambulance bays is where the main sign is going to go for the facility. But it will also be marked at the entrance, the driveway off of East Side Road, there will be a sign indicating ambulance garage or EMS building, something to that effect. The, as far as the looks of the building, it's going to very closely resemble the hospital. So, on the lower level, will be all brick, same color as the hospital. The upper part will be EPIS, which if you look at the hospital, it's brick and then EPIS on top, so it's going to match exactly that. That's the intent, is to match the design of the facility, the existing facility and tie them in. You notice the front vestibule area, the front entry, has a higher elevation, and that's, again, to match, to tie everything into the building, so. And off of the, I should say, off of the day room, there is a patio area for the staff on the backside of the building, so if they're there and want to go outside and sit down outside, they have that area to do so. And the next page, A5.2, is just the west and southwest elevations. In the southwest elevation, you can see that it's showing double doors. Initially, the plan was sliding patio-type doors. After some discussion with the architect, we decided to go with a single glass, with a single door, it's full glass, just for maintenance and ease of use. So, that is the building. The project is wrapping up as far as the design. We met with the architects to go over the finishes and all that, so we've already met and done that. And the next step is, February 1st, the bids go out, or the documents go out for bid. They'll be out for three weeks. Once the bids close, or the timeframe is closed, the general contractor will receive the bids, and we will sit down and go through them at the hospital. And then, the team that's been working on this will award the bids with the hope of being in the ground, depending on how the rest of the winter goes, yet, in March, early April. The project deadline is August 31st. Mark and Johnson, who's the general contractor, has been made aware of that from the very first meeting that we have that deadline, and they've been told that they really need to, that would be in their best interest to make sure that it's done that way, or done up, that we can take occupancy on the 31st. So, that is the plan. They're the same company that did the addition, the 20,000 square foot addition, in less than a year. So we're figuring, our building is 8,325 feet, so if they can do a 20,000 square foot addition in less than a year, that our ambulance garage and facility will be, shouldn't be too big of an issue for them, especially considering just under half of our building is garage. So, as far as doing some of the other meetings, the question came about budgets. The hope was that the facility would be $1.5 million all in, so fixtures, furnishings, equipment, everything. We are over that without any of the fixtures, furnishings, or equipment. Initially, when the building, or when the very first design came out, it was over 9,000 square feet, which had a price tag of over $2 million. So we did do some cuts, different things. We reduced it by over 1,000 square feet. That was two extra dorm rooms and just some extra stored, some additional storage space, I shouldn't say extra, because it was all purposed out. The general contractor has said that they're figuring, their estimate is 1.526 million. When we were meeting with them, they asked if we wanted them to continue looking at options to cut, and the hospital CEO just said, no, we don't have anything else to cut. This building is being designed to last long-term, and they're okay with it being over budget. Knowing that it's going to be there for a long time. So, one of the things that we did look at was making the bay only hold four instead of six. That just wasn't, that didn't provide any cost savings, so. It was about $50,000 was the estimate, is what it saved, so it was decided against doing that, so. Are there any questions on the building? Yes, Ken?
Previously, I asked about whether you have a safe room. So, in these drawings, is there a safe room shown in one of these drawings?
The, excuse me, the report room is still, the way it's being designed is still being figured as a safe room.
Does that, what does that mean? It has few windows or no windows?
It has one window in the corner, just to provide some daylight in that room. The staff really aren't, the way it is right now, the staff really aren't going to be in the building a whole lot. They'll be in the hospital itself most of the time.
Okay, I'd like to give a few comments. We had a tornado two years ago, and this came without warning. My wife was in one room and I was sitting in the kitchen, so there's no warning whatsoever. So, I do have a question about, what is the design as far as the outer shell of the building, or buildings, whatever you want to call it?
It is-
Is the shell concrete block?
The garage is. The office space and living quarters is structural steel.
Structural steel. So that's, steel is anchored to the foundation?
Correct.
And then, is the steel anchoring to the roof members?
I, I, I'm not sure how-
Well, this is one thing that-
They're, they're aware of our tornado. They were part of the community when that all struck, and that was a lengthy conversation that we had with them, was making sure that it would be a safe facility.
Yes, it needs to be tornado resistant. It's not going to be tornado proof, but it needs to be resistant. And it's important to anchor the roof to the concrete, whether it's by steel or by chains. What about the windows? What are they, as far as extent of shattering? Our experience and our-
I'm not sure what they're-
The time we had a tornado was, we had a lot of shattering and throwing glass inside the house.
I'm not sure what the window is yet. Part of the meeting, I had to leave for another meeting, so there are some things that I missed with the architects.
So, I hope it's being built so that not only is there a safe room, but also that the outer structure is going to be sufficiently strong as far as distance to a tornado. Thank you.
One of the other things that, just wanted, by coming tonight, was just to give you a quick update. Last year, we answered 1,311 calls total between the city of Platteville and Southwest Health. In the three months and four days that we were Southwest Health, I'm sorry, three months and three days, we answered 375 calls. So, our volume between 2015, 2014 was 12 and a half percent increase. With that taken into account and staff, looking how best the staff may service, ensure the best care for the residents that we serve, we are actually moving forward with going full-time, part-time, and we will be starting February 7th. Staff have started to be offered positions, but February 7th is the date that we are planning on going full-time personnel, so.
How are you doing on the paramedic progression?
We have started that process. It's a lengthy one with lots of information together. So we have started, one of the things that we started doing, I reached out to a service that has protocols that we're looking at using and have gotten that information, so we're going to be started working on that, along with starting all the paperwork for the state. There's a feasibility study that has to be completed first, so it's gathering a lot of information, putting that into the feasibility study and sending it to the state for approval. Then they'll send back saying yes or no, it's feasible for your service to go to the paramedic level. And once that's received back, I don't foresee that coming back, no. Once that's received, then it's working on the operational plan, which will be very in-depth and detailed and take some time to get done. And the state will, we'll submit it to the state for approval and then wait and see. Once they get the approval, they will actually set a date, working with us to, as to when to transition over to a paramedic level service. I currently have four staff that are in the paramedic program. Three are at M E T C in Madison, or Madison College, and one is taking theirs at the University of Iowa. So, by year end, I'll have four staff, if everything goes well, that are paramedic, in addition to any that we hire.
Other questions?
How many of the original EMS people that were in Platteville are now part of the little picture over there at Southwest Health?
Off the top of my head, I believe there are 14. There were 26, like, when we transitioned. There were some that were not brought on and others that chose not to come on, some moved out of the area, so it just happened to be at that exact same time.
So, the 14, these are all full-time people now?
We're transitioning to full-time. There will be eight full-time and four part-time to staff the ambulance 24/7. And as we add, if we staff another ambulance, there will be eight more people full-time and four more part-time.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on the single motion of vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you prefer a separate discussion in action. A is council minutes from the January 12, 16 meeting. B is payment of bills. C is appointments to boards and commissions. There are some openings on Board of Appeals and also on the Commission on Aging, so if you are interested in applying, the application form is online. Licenses, one-year and two-year operator license to sell and serve alcohol and a banner permit to United Way of Platteville to be displayed from September 12 to October 31st. Is there a motion?
I would like separate consideration of the minutes, please.
Okay. Want to make the motion to approve the rester?
I move approval of the consent calendar without the minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve without the minutes, and we'll vote on that first.
Killian?
Yes.
Seboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Killian, your question on the minutes.
Okay, and the minutes, page 2, the large paragraph, and I'd like an insert to be placed, 2, 4, 6, 7, about 8, 8 lines from the bottom, placed just before the name of Doss. And the city clerk and I have agreed upon an insert, and I've asked Jen to read that insert.
So, Killian was concerned with outdated parking requirements with respect to big projects downtown.
What was the, could you reread that, please?
Killian was concerned with outdated parking requirements with respect to big projects downtown.
Killian was concerned with outdated-
Parking requirements.
He was concerned that the parking requirements are outdated.
Yes, for a large project. And your response was about the redoing of the parking requirements five years ago.
Right.
Yeah. I wanted to have that inserted before that.
I, I would prefer, just kind of, the way it was worded, I, I don't have a problem with inserting it, but I think it should say you were concerned that the parking regulations were outdated.
Right, right.
I'd move approval of the minutes with that insertion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Seboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. I don't have any requests this evening for anyone to speak, so we'll go on to the reports that are in the packet. First is our entry gallery board minutes. Seboth-Wilson?
I just want to point out that there is a job opening for the gallery director that's due February 15th, and you can find the position description on the website. Otherwise, nothing to add.
Museum board, Stackhausen?
Nothing to add.
Library board, I have nothing to add.
I have a question?
Yes.
Under five business B, and underneath the five business B, please explain, it says, motion to table the implementation of our new policy by Gutshock, seconded by Nichols. So, what's the new-
The library?
What's the new policy, to charge $100?
I'm sorry, Ken, I need to find-
Which, which-
Right here. So what was?
Ah, that's a good question. We did talk about an amount, I think it was increased slightly. Let me, let me bring that back next time, because I don't remember exactly what the new, new motion, or the new amount would be.
But, committee, are you speaking?
Thank you.
The library.
Library board.
Yeah, a library card. Yeah, a difference in whether you're a resident or an out-of-state resident, or here's for the summer, for example, because some people, a lot of people come for the summer if they have relatives, and then they get a library card, so. I will get back to you on that. Water and sewer commission, Knoll. And actually, it's Killian and, I don't know, who else is on? You and-
I was in there.
You went there, all right. Tommy, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Airport commission, Doss?
Well, it wasn't in these minutes, but I believe that it has been reported in a council update that the airport commission has awarded a contract for upgrades to the terminal. So, if anybody sees work out there, that's what's going on. And in February, there will be a special ski plane fly-in at the airport.
Okay.
Yeah, airport, airplanes with skis on them, and that, so they're going to have a special fly-in. Unfortunately, I've, right now, forgotten the date.
Do they land on a regular landing?
No, they don't land on the runway, they'll land on the grass. And, and if you watch, in fact, I just saw a plane with skis on it the other day flying, not landing at our airport, but I was like, what the heck is wrong with that airplane? And then I noticed that it had skis on it. So, it's just a kind of anomaly, and probably would be kind of a fun thing to do. The airport management is teaming up with the airport, an airport group, the EAA group out of Dubuque, and they're going to have chili for sale, and so it'll be kind of a festive day at the airport.
Will the airplanes land if there's no snow?
Uh, well, I don't know, because right now, we aren't going to worry about that. Right now, we have that covered, or the snow has us covered, something like that.
Next three days, they're going to be quite warm.
Well, that's true.
That's an interesting idea. All right. Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, Seboth-Wilson?
Nothing to add.
Our first action item is Resolution 1602, amending the schedule of fees. Jen?
At the last meeting, we went through the different fees that were changed, or that were proposing to be changes for different various license permits, inspections. I think Luke would like to give you an update on the Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee.
Sure. At the last Parks, Forestry, and Rec Committee, after they heard the discussion at the council, they recommended to increase the non-resident fee from $60 for a season pass to $75 for a season pass.
Questions?
Do I explain that at all? Or, I can't remember what it was in the original proposal, was it $75?
The original proposal was $60 for a individual season pass for a non-resident versus the 50 for the resident. Council discussions seemed to indicate that they felt that was insufficient difference, and upon hearing that, they recommended to increase that from, to $75, with additional $20 for each additional family member.
Thank you, Luke.
And that change is reflected in the schedule.
Thank you, Luke, because, for bringing that back to the committee.
Questions on the schedule of fees?
I'd move adoption of Resolution 1602, City of Platteville, 2016 fee schedule.
Second.
A motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Seboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is assign rights and obligations under development agreement to the McGregor Plaza sale. Not sure if, Joe, you want to cover that? Okay.
Yeah. The owners of the McGregor Plaza Shopping Center would like to sell that property to Pigwa, Piggly Wiggly Midwest LLC, which is the parent company of Piggly Wiggly. We have to get involved in that sale because back in 2006, the city provided some financial assistance to those owners to do some improvements to that property, and part of that development agreement says that we have to approve any sale of that property, so that's what they're asking for this evening. One thing in that agreement is basically a clause that we don't want it sold to a non-taxable entity, and in this case, they have confirmed that the buyer is a taxable entity, so that is not an issue. But as part of that sale agreement, the buyers have agreed to assume all the rights and responsibilities and conditions of that original development agreement, so everything will basically be transferring over to the buyer. So, as far as the city is concerned, there really isn't a change in how that is all going to be processed. The RDA did review this and approved it at their meeting last night. They just wanted to confirm that the buyer is not a non-taxable entity, and to make sure that the buyer is also going to be responsible for any delinquency payments in the taxes and so forth, and that has been included in the sale documents. So, they have recommended approval, and staff also recommends approval. Any questions?
And, and I would point out, the sale documents aren't included in the packet, right?
Correct.
But there is a provision within the sale document that specifically references the 2015 payment to-
If there's a shortfall in the taxes under that development agreement, the buyer will make those payments, which wouldn't be due until the end of this year, so.
Well, actually, they're due August 31st. Well, actually, they're due August thirty-first.
Right, after the sale is completed, so the buyer would be responsible for that.
What is the principal owed? The back page, is that two hundred and fifty thousand, am I reading correctly or?
Yeah, it's calculated each year.
So that's gonna be a balloon payment at the end?
I'm sorry, what was that?
This is gonna be a balloon payment, they've not paid on the principal, have they?
Their, their current, um, basically, the original agreement said that they had to achieve a certain value in the property and when they did, they initially met that value, but then they asked for a, uh, difference in the appraisal.
Right.
And that was reduced, so that dropped them below that amount, so they have to make a penalty payment that makes up that difference. So that amount is calculated annually based on the value of the property and the actual taxes that are paid. So as of, uh, eight thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen, um, they would owe twenty-four thousand, seven forty-two, seventy-six.
But the principal, what's the amount of principal owed yet? Do I have that correct, two hundred and fifty thousand?
Hundred and forty-five thousand.
About a hundred and forty-five thousand.
Hundred and forty-five thousand. The tax payment that they're making can pays for the, um, TIF payment.
That's right, that's right, I got that.
This, this year, they owed the city twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, principal and interest, on the TIF payment. Their taxes were only a thousand eighty-two dollars, so they owe the, the balance, which is twenty-four thousand, seven forty-two, seventy-six.
Are you saying?
Still a hundred and forty-five.
Right.
Are you saying that in the offer of the purchase, the offer agreement, that the twenty-four thousand, seven forty-two, seventy-six is gonna be paid by the buyer? The buyer will be responsible for that payment. Is it gonna be paid by the buyer? In other words? It's not part of the closing, but the buyer is responsible to pay that fee. Can we request it be part of the closing? No. We, we requested and they said, since it's not due prior to the closing, it will be paid according to? Yeah, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, what guarantee do we have that they'll pay it? The same guarantee that we had, that McGregor Plaza would pay it under the development agreement. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Sure.
Any other questions?
This is a, kind of a side question. I've been asked the question, what's gonna happen to the whole complex area when Piggly, Piggly Wiggly buys it? Any word that can be given on that?
Uh, we've had limited contact with Piggly Wiggly, we did reach out to them, um, and I, I got an email back. I think they were still pretty busy, um, in terms of the closing itself. Uh, we had heard that they, uh, were potentially interested in remodeling. Uh, we had also heard that they might be potentially interested in some city assistance with that remodeling, but that's, uh, the first, further, furthest anything's gone.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a recommendation, or amendment, or recommendation, that the sale be, of the property be approved by, as requested, with the condition that the buyers be subject to all of the terms and conditions of the original development agreement.
Second to the motion.
We have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dawes?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is ordinance sixteen oh-two, um, amending a section to allow provisional taxi and a taxi driver licenses. Jan, do you want to speak to this?
Sure. This proposed ordinance would, um, allow the clerk, the clerk's office, to issue a sixty-day provisional taxi and taxi driver licenses. Currently, we don't have, um, this into, in effect, so the person has to wait until the next council meeting. And if they want to be driving in between that two or three weeks, there is no provision for it. So this would allow for it.
This is, uh, similar to the, um, ability of the clerk to issue a provisional operator's license relative to, um...
Alcohol.
Alcohol. So we have it for alcohol, we didn't have it for taxi.
Questions, anyone?
Can cause problems if?
Right, if someone has met all the requirements and the council's not meeting for two weeks, then, yeah.
Right.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and we'll vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dawes?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under information and discussion, the first item is Administration Department Succession Plan.
I, I can take this, I, I would describe this as a series of bad news, good news. So, uh, starting off with the bad news, which is that, uh, our, uh, Administrative Services Director, Dwayne Borgan, is gonna be retiring May fourteenth, I think I got that right. Um, Dwayne's been with the city for, uh, almost thirty-eight years and obviously, that's gonna be a significant loss. The good news is that there was a, a succession plan in place and, uh, when Valerie Martin was hired a few years ago to sort of start that knowledge transfer process. And so we're fortunate that she's been able to, um, learn the budget process, uh, work on financing arrangements and some of the things that would be typically done by the Administrative Services Director, uh, to prepare herself to become, uh, Dwayne's replacement. Not that Dwayne can ever be replaced, but to do the best job she can. So the bad news, good news next is that Valerie is expecting her second child in, in June, which is great news for Valerie, but, um, certainly has some complications in terms of staffing for us because we will have lost our director and the finance, uh, operations manager at the same time. So, uh, what we're proposing in the, um, item before you is that we actually move forward to hire Valerie's replacement early, uh, so that we can, uh, train that person a couple of months before, uh, we lose, uh, both of those two vital individuals from the finance department.
Why do you feel you need, uh, eight thousand dollars out of the contingency fund? Uh, I, I remember right, when we, when Valerie came on board, it was what, fifty, fifty-one thousand? Somewhere in that neighborhood? So why do you need to add another, uh, eight thousand dollars to that amount?
Because there will be a period of time when, rather than just having the two individuals, Dwayne and Valerie, there will actually be three people, there'll be Dwayne, Valerie, and then the new person that we're training in advance of Dwayne's retirement and then Valerie's absence. So we'd like to have that person on board for two months.
Okay, but that's not an increase of the dollars and cents that we're looking at bringing somebody on board then, is it?
No, but we need to increase the, um, the dollars allocated to the finance fund to cover that salary.
But not just, let's say we're gonna bring this other person on at fifty-one or fifty-two, we're not bringing them on at sixty or sixty-two.
We, we don't know the salary yet. Fortunately, we should hopefully have some indication in the compensation study, which we just talked about at our previous work session with respect to where we should be targeting that position to be market-competitive. I know I did have some discussions with, uh, Charlie earlier today. This could be an area where we may need to go higher than our current incumbent salary to be able to attract the talent that we need, but we won't know until we get out there in the marketplace.
I think we did very good with Valerie when we brought her on board, because she's done a great job.
She has, we were fortunate that she wanted to move back to her hometown, but we can't always count on that, having that candidate available.
You can start there.
I think, as Karen said, that's why we're having the compensation study, Mike, so hopefully we'll have more information before we actually have to make a final decision on this.
And I, and I guess it's not your, Valerie's hometown, but it was near her hometown. I want to actually correct that.
Any other questions?
No, except that I believe that it is necessary and justifiable to hire someone on so that we get some training done.
Most definitely.
I think that's a really?
Yeah, we definitely do that.
Vital move.
And we will, we will probably proceed with advertising this position in advance of the next council meeting when you'll officially approve it, just because we need to get going, um, in terms of the hiring timeline.
Just out of curiosity, what is our maternity leave policy? I don't even know.
I, I don't think we have a maternity leave policy outside of the Family Medical Leave Act.
Okay, so just twelve weeks with?
Twelve weeks, and then if you have paid time, you can use it during that period.
Thank you.
All right, next item under information and discussion is the pool concessions, it says stand lease, that's right?
That's right.
That's what you call it, the stand, the pool concession stand?
Um, the current L C of the, uh, Pool Concession Stand State Theaters has asked for an extension, um, of their current lease, which would have normally extended through the end of this upcoming summer. Their reasoning was justify, or was stated in a letter that was in your council packet. Um, he pointed out that he's looking to make upgrades to some equipment that would have a longer payoff time than that one year and, obviously, he doesn't want to go forward with the purchase of those without a guarantee of a five-year contract. The change, one of the main changes in the contract is it was set in at a escalator, um, amount, where his, his fund, or the amount he was paying was going up by a hundred dollars each year. Um, he has asked to be locked in at a two-thousand-dollar rate, which was the rate he was paying in two thousand and fifteen. Any questions?
Luke, the one, one question I have for you is when it talked about, the one thing that's crossed out here, it said something, I'm gonna find the right page here, something to do with, um, people weren't allowed on the property unless they paid, what kind of a?
Yeah, I think the main, he, he pointed out a number of concerns. His key there was they do cross the grounds to get ice and things like that. And I don't, you know, if, honestly, if they want to dip their feet in the pool, I, I don't really care, you know? As long as they're doing the job and sta, staffing it, it wasn't a major concern to me, it seemed to be to him, so I agree. Yeah. I think that's just, they cross, I mean, in there, it's, it's clear they cannot be outside of that area.
Yeah.
And they do have to go outside of the area to get ice and things like that, but, you know? I think it was just a, it was a clarification I don't think ever would come up in practice.
It's right here in this.
Let's see, on number seven, let's see, about one, two, third page? Uh, explain about this, uh, thing as far as with the Pepsi Company? That's all, that's all crossed out, was there agreement between the tenant and Pepsi Company?
Previously, the city had an agreement with Pepsi, um, where they were our vendor for vending machines and that extended to the pool area. Um, we no longer are, are under that contract, so again, at the request of the L C, we have, well, I, I don't see an issue with them serving Pepsi or Coke, um, because there's no longer a Pepsi agreement with the city.
So before, we were selling the Pepsi and, and recouping the profit on that?
From, in, in vending machines throughout the park, we had an agreement with Pepsi that we could only sell Pepsi in the parks.
Oh, okay.
Now, will that cause us to, or did that cause us to change our vending machines then?
We no longer have vending machines in the parks.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, I haven't been in a long time.
I discussed with Luke today about healthy choices. And, uh, I'm in favor of healthy choices, which means, um, less than way of food that is high in salt, high in sugar, high in fat. And, um, I guess I'd ask Luke to make a few comments about this, whether this is a feasible thing or not.
Sure. The past, uh, well, pretty much every year since I've been here, I have had discussions with, um, State Theaters about offering healthy choices. Um, each year, they start out with a few additional healthy choices and he indicates that, um, no one buys them and therefore, he ends up eating them himself and cutting the loss, or oftentimes, your healthy choices expire a lot quicker in, in a hot, humid environment like that. In terms of this current contract, it does not allow us to dictate, um, that. Um, we are able to dictate what he sells, but only in that, things that would cause damage to the pool, so gum that might get spit out and cause, you know, a headache cleaning up. So this current contact, contract would not allow us to do healthy choices. You did mention, we did talk about some alternatives, I did get some numbers for you, um, because you were curious. Previously, when we did run the stand, what type of loss or gains or losses we had. Previously, and I should point out Valerie, thank you to her, because she's the ones that got me these numbers. Um, in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven, the city lost approximately five thousand dollars a year running the concession stand. Then, I believe in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, we were able to work out an agreement where the city was able to purchase at a discount, um, things from State Theaters. Um, so that did reduce the amount of loss from, uh, eight thousand dollar, or to, uh, or from the five thousand to approximately eight thousand fifty dollars in two thousand and eight. And then in two thousand and nine, I believe is when the, the contract kind of first started, but we ended up making one hundred and twenty dollars.
Sorry, you said you reduced the losses from five thousand to eight thousand?
Five, I'm sorry, did I, I misspoke if I said that?
Or I misunderstood.
Five thousand dollars, negative to eight hundred dollars, negative, negative.
Negative, oh, okay.
Yeah, so a reducing loss, but still a loss up until the next year, when it was a positive gain of one hundred and twenty dollars for running the stand.
Thank you.
But what, am I, I guess my question too, I gave you was, what do you attribute this to? He, is he buying cheaper? Or is he using less help that is, uh, not being paid?
Are you, are you saying, why is he able to turn a profit and we aren't?
Yes.
Not having been here then, I don't know completely. I don't know if there was some loss there, um, from staff, I, I really, I really don't know exactly the reason. Um, I'm, based on the notes I have, before two thousand and seven, we were purchasing at a much higher cost than he was able to get. He had agreed at one point to sell us the product at a cheaper rate where we were able to buy in bulk with him, but because we're still, still losing money, I think the director at that time decided to go ahead with, um, the lease to him, which would guarantee a profit for the city and a consistent operation of the stand.
Thank you. Thank you, Valerie.
Any other questions? All right, that concludes our information and discussion and we have a work session on sidewalk snow removals and we'll discuss that and then we'll adjourn.